All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the May 28th, 2024 School Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Need.
Here.
Maggie Smith, here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here.
Kieven Zilke.
Here.
Jennifer Deef.
Here.
Khadija Islam.
Here.
It was seven of the seven board members present. I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
All right, Chris has moved.
Second.
Maggie, second, to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And we do not have any public participation this evening. So moving on to the District Administrator's Report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, well, first, I just want to once again congratulate all of our graduates who graduated this past Saturday. We had just over 300 graduates, and I want to take the opportunity to say thank you to all of our staff, our administration staff that put in all the time to make that such a successful event. So, thank you for that. Also, the Holman Area Foundation is partnering with our Activities Department like they do each year, and we have our 18 Holes for Holman Golf outing on June 19th. So if you haven't, get a team together and you can participate to help support the Foundation and Activities Department. And also want to congratulate the Holman Boys Golf and Baseball Teams and the Girls Track on winning conference championships this past spring season, so congratulations to them. And, well, if the rain stops, we'll get to continue our tournament time. And then best wishes, we have nine track and field student athletes that will advance to the state track and field meet held at UWL this weekend. So we want to say good luck to Jakai, running the 110-meter hurdles, and Jewel Jackson will do the 100-meter dash, and Ryland Ikoff, 200-meter dash. Colm Ozer will do the discus. Isaiah Wadon will do the pole vault. Brenna Schmidt will do the shot put. Sabrina Lickner will do the 3200-meter run. Jaden Roden will do shot put and discus. And Lydia Loseruskew, I always, so sorry, Lydia, will do the 100- and 200-meter dash. We have a lot of athletes that are looking at being state champs, so very excited for their participation. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to recognition and thank yous. I'd like to ask the retirees in the room to just come stand up here by the school district of Holman sign.
We want to make sure everyone out there in the public gets to see you again. Yay.
All right, so the School Board and the district staff would like to take a moment to honor and recognize 16 remarkable 2023-24 retirees from the school district of Holman. So four of them are standing right here. With a combined 382 years of service to our district, your dedication, passion, and countless contributions have profoundly impacted our students, our district, and our community. Each of you has brought unique talents and an unwavering commitment to education that will be felt for years to come. On behalf of the entire School Board and the district, we extend our deepest gratitude and best wishes for a fulfilling and joyful retirement. Thank you all for your extraordinary service. Sure.
Anyone else?
Oh, I'm gonna go.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Aya.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 9.1, I welcome representatives of the Holman Middle School Student Council to the presenter's table. This item is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
Good evening. I am Jen Dinger, and I am one of the advisors of the Holman Middle School Student Council. And really, we're just going to introduce ourselves, and then we're turning it over to the kids, because that's who you really want to hear from, so.
Hello, I am Andrea Cortez, co-advisor with Ms. Dinger. It's my first year doing this, and I have loved working with the students this year. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nora. I'm in eighth grade, and I've been in Student Council for three years.
Hi, I'm Ben the Hammerman. I'm a sixth grader at HMS.
Hi, I'm Ellie Monroe, and I'm also a sixth grader at HMS.
I'm Charlotte Randall, and I'm also a sixth grader at HMS. The Student Council, the HMS Student Council is one of the few clubs in the middle school that functions a year. We have a great group of about 40 students who desire to make a difference in their school, community, and council while encouraging them to participate in their other activities that they are interested in, which means our active membership ebbs and flows a bit throughout the year. We kicked off the year strong by coming together and picking Neon slash AD Celebration as a theme. We often have many overlapping members in Drama Club and Student Council, so this year we intentionally partnered together so that students could participate and show their Holman pride in both groups. Once again, Student Council members helped out with the fall fundraiser by making short work of unloading items and organizing them for pickup. Members and parent volunteers assisted with handing out and collecting funds. This fundraiser generates a lot of funds that go right back to HMS teachers and classrooms and is the main source of Student Council budget. Members also welcomed families and staff, and help out staff in any way they can during fall parent-teacher conferences, including trying to make lost and found items visible. Five middle school Student Council members committed to volunteering on Saturday, October 21st, at the 2023 Holman Community Center's Second Annual Pumpkin Fest. This is a great opportunity for students to stretch their responsibility muscles and as they coordinate their own logistics for the weekend event. Making pies for the lacrosse communities Thanksgiving dinner has been a long tradition for the HMS Student Council. This year, we shifted our donations slightly closer to home by connecting with the On Alaska and Holman Community Dinner. We had a great time and were able to put together 60 pies in less than an hour. The HMS Nutrition Team and Custodial Staff are always in the background providing support to make this annual event a success. We look forward to keeping this tradition alive in the future.
The HMS Student Council was honored to be a part of the team that hosted the 2023 Veterans Day Assembly. Hadley Johnson led the Pledge of Allegiance. Marlee Roth introduced our honored guest speaker, First Sergeant Jeffrey Geary. Several members welcomed guests. Others' members helped capture the event in photos and videos. And Brendan Lawrence and Xena Ott read excerpts from the Gettysburg Address and "Oh Captain, My Captain." Eighth-grade ELA teacher Daisy McAndrews provided valuable support to assist Brendan and Xena in their preparation. Another example of how many HMS staff support the efforts of Student Council throughout the year. Our winter celebration is in December and pulls a fun cap on our first semester activities. Spring volunteer opportunities. With the early arrival of some warmer weather, we took the opportunity to do some early trash cleanup. We spent one of our February meetings cleaning up trash on the property, and then in March, we cleaned up along the bike path just north of HMS. We also promoted a reboot of the updated Box Tops for Education program while helping out at spring conferences. All funds that are earned through the program will be directed towards future service projects.
Student Council members helped add to the activities for Mental Health Awareness Month, coordinated by HMS school counselors by creating, cutting, and hanging encouraging messages throughout the building. Posters encouraged students to take a kind message for themselves and also share with other students. This was a small action step in an ongoing goal of Student Council to contribute to creating a welcoming environment for all students at HMS. The Student Council has other ideas and projects in development to continue working on in upcoming years, including posters to hang with positive messages, tips for student wellness, and to get involved and connected in the HMS community throughout the years. We also took our first steps to join an amazing project that you probably have heard of, Catherine Jensen's The Little Heart Project. We used some of our budget this year to purchase supplies to start crocheting hearts. So far, we only have a few members who are proficient, but this year was just a beginning. We will continue to grow our collective expertise with the goal of being able to keep our own HMS bucket filled with hearts for students to take when they need encouragement and to share with others. Our final large group meeting and year-end celebration was last week Tuesday, and one of our retired community members, Maynard Swenson, who has crocheted over 2,600 hearts since January, joined us for the first time to help teach more members. We have plans for Maynard to join us in the fall and continue developing the skills of even more students. Student Council members love showing appreciation for HMS staff throughout the year. This year for American Education Week, Student Council provided two options for staff to enjoy, extra gum and popcorn. We also parted with HMS Admin and Nutrition Team to provide a sandwich or salad meal for staff on conference nights. The event that takes the most hands-on deck each year is our annual Staff Luncheon, which we host during Teacher Appreciation Week. This year's theme was Midday Oasis, which included a buffet and charcuterie-style spread with a Mediterranean flair. Table decor included inspirational messages and stickers with self-care ideas for staff to use and share with their students. And each staff received a small jar with reminders of why the work they do is so important today and for the future of our world, but also why self-care is not optional but essential.
Any questions from the board members?
I'm curious what your favorite event or part of council was in the last year.
I like the pie baking personally. It was a lot of fun. You could like pick partners to do it with.
I really liked the staff lunch, and it was really fun to restock all the stuff and see all the staff.
I, again, like the staff luncheon. It was like fun.
I really like the pie baking because sometimes I really like to bake.
Thank you. You don't all have to answer, but I'm curious, what inspired you to get involved with Student Council?
I did it in elementary school too, and I had a lot of fun doing it then, so I decided to try it out in middle school, and I ended up really liking it.
Last year, I didn't get to do Student Council, so I really wanted to try it out this year.
I also didn't get to do Student Council last year, so I also really wanted to try it out.
I just wanted to try something new, and I ended up really liking it.
That's awesome. Nice presentation, guys. You did great.
Yep, and this week they're hosting our fifth grade tours, so.
Oh, nice.
All right, moving on to item 9.2. Executive Director of Instructional Services, Kim Edwards, and Instructional Coach Brenda Geyer, along with Educators Ryan.
Guyer.
Guyer, okay. Cowes? And Bethany Schultz will now present the Math Curriculum Agenda Item. This item will appear on the June 10th Consent Agenda.
Good evening. We're excited to be here to show you the work that the representatives from our district math team have been working on as part of our K-12 math cycle that has been taking place for the past couple of years. So we have all kinds of results and developments to share with you. And with that, I am going to really turn it over to our team, and I'll let them introduce themselves first.
Hi, I'm Ryan Cowes. I'm the high school member. I teach high school math.
Bethany Schultz, I teach sixth grade math.
Brenda Geyer, elementary math coach.
So a couple of years ago, our math standards were revised in Wisconsin, and there were a couple of key shifts. I won't read them all, but you can kind of see them up there. And I'll highlight a couple of them that I think in all of our buildings, we've really tried to incorporate more. Shift number three, I think, is super critical. We've really tried to move to more of a deeper understanding for students and our standards and really kind of move away from some of the just memorizing things and really kind of along with shift five, really kind of get them to make connections to their mathematics, which really can, I see a lot more of confidence in my students when there's not just one way of solving things, but when they can really start to see what they understand with their number sense and make connections to the standards and share that understanding. So these are some of those shifts that I think we all had already in our curriculum, but really trying to improve even more. And then along with content standards in the math, state math standards, there's also math practices. So along with the content, each grade level is also incorporating these eight math practices in our students. I know in sixth grade, we really focus a lot on number three there, constructing viable arguments and critiquing reasoning of others. So really, again, building on that confidence and letting them explain why their math strategy works and how it might be different than others. Same with modeling with mathematics. So really getting them to use their number sense to show what they're thinking and show their understanding and not just, again, spitting out answers that they've maybe memorized.
Okay, I'm kind of awkward. Do you want me to scoot in a little bit? Okay. So at the elementary level, I want to start by kind of saying probably one of our greatest celebrations has been the opportunity to collaborate across our elementary buildings and truly alongside our specialist teachers. So as we work to build more equitable instruction in our school district, their lens and diverse perspectives on our elementary team has been extremely valuable. And I want to take a moment, you can see all the names on the screen, by building who that all includes. So to thank all of those members for all the work and insight and perspective, they've kind of helped us at the elementary level to help move forward in math. So the work of that team really has come to the conclusion of these key considerations that you're seeing on the screen. So that first bullet there talks about the five shifts, which is also what Bethany had mentioned a little bit earlier. But the two new ones in the 2021 revised standards talk specifically about students having a positive identity in math and being a flexible user of math. So sometimes in the public, we hear people say, "I'm not a math person." Our real goal for math instruction is that every child leaves our school district feeling like they are a learner and doer of math. So that's kind of one of the big key things we're really looking at at the elementary level. And then alongside that, as Bethany talked about, kind of that flexible use of strategies, that's what helps support and build our kids in feeling that positive identity. When my strategy matters and is important, and there's not one right way to do it, it helps supports all of our students. So those two shifts have been kind of powerful for us to think about. Next, moving on, Bethany also talked about the rigor in math as one of the shifts in our standards. That was in our original 2010 standards as well, the importance of rigor and a deep understanding in math. So as we think about that and we think about every student in our district, how do we continue to offer grade-level standards that all students have access to those and that we look at in our instruction scaffolding to support struggling students, but making sure we offer grade-level content for all kids? Next, moving on, the discussions, again, Bethany kind of talked about all these awesome things, the critique viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others at the elementary level as well. We recognize and value the importance of mathematical discussions and have looked at some research-based practices such as math language routines to support not only our multilingual students, but truly all students in our district. So maybe less problems, but more deep thinking and conversations around those problems is sort of a goal right now at the elementary level. Moving on then to that next column, it talks about kind of highlighting a continued emphasis. So we have been working at the elementary level for multiple years, looking at conceptual understanding first to then procedural fluency. And so we just want to recognize and continue to acknowledge that's the same work we're going to continue to do at the elementary level. Next, some standards were added in our revised 2021 Wisconsin standards that said estimation in real-world context. So there've been some little dynamic shifts in standard language that has really helped to be math is about understanding our world, and estimation through problem types that are related to things we might see in real life is a part of that. So continuing to think about math instruction through the eyes of our world. Next, when we think about fluency, or sometimes we talk about basic facts, if kids just knew their basic facts. So the idea of the standards is it's not about memorization and rote practice, but more so about flexible use of strategies to understand those basic facts and use that understanding to learn and understand other basic facts. So that's also a shift happening. The next standard talks about subitizing in our early grades. So some standards were added, and we had already had some work in place regarding that, but continuing to acknowledge that. And just to share a little bit, Kim said to me the other day, "Can you explain what subitizing is as we're talking about it?" I feel like, oh, it's just a word I say. But subitizing really means, like, if I just held up four fingers, kids automatically know that's four without having to count, is what subitizing means. So a continued emphasis on that at our early grade levels. And that's kind of led us as a K-5 elementary team to the recognition that we really want to look at adopting a high-quality resource to support our elementary schools with all of this work. So we did reach out to the Math Institute of Wisconsin, who had recommended three different program resources out there. And through the work of our team, have eliminated that down to two different programs, which we will pilot, not this next school year, but the coming school year, and then eventually decide between the two which best resource will support us in all of these pieces that we're talking about tonight. And lastly, just to kind of wrap up, the other key component here is the discussion among our team of continued support and emphasis on professional development for elementary teachers. We know that they're content experts in everything, which is really challenging. So we recognize the importance of continuing to offer and provide professional development to support them in all of this work that we're doing. We were able to receive $3,000-4,000 grants this year to support elementary buildings, principal, and teacher team in the work of best instructional practices in math. And the work that those teams are doing this spring semester will be carried forward next year. We partnered with UW Lacrosse math professors for that, and they'll be working alongside us next school year as well. So we're pretty excited about that work. Thank you. Oh, I forgot this part. The next part is just kind of some of the documentation that goes with our curriculum work. So our standards plan, this is kind of the template of what it looks like. So each team went through and identified priority standards and then unpacked each of those standards. What does it mean? What does it look like? What are we doing in instruction to support students? So that's kind of what the template overview looks like. And then here's just a second grade example of that that will eventually be on our district website.
In fact, I think you have the complete K-12 doc in your board materials.
All right. So here are the teachers for the middle school math teams, including our special ed staff that teach some of those targeted math classes for our students with IEPs that have math goals. And then our Tier Three Interventionist, Kim Stripmater, who also teaches a section of eighth grade math for us. So at the middle school, in our self-study, many years back, we participated in a grant at UWL that helped us unpack the standards and really work with the math professors there to understand the standards and what we were expected to assess and what the students were expected to understand. And when we were in our last cycle and looking for resources, at that point, we were not happy with any of the resources we were finding. Common Core was fairly new, and we weren't happy with the kind of packaged resources that were out there. So we decided at that point in our work with Jen Koziak at UWL that we would start writing essentially our own curriculum. So we would work 6-8 and write all of our assessments and write all of our own lessons. And so then through this cycle, we again partnered with Jen Koziak at UWL. She was a past president of the Wisconsin Math Council. And she looked through what we've chosen as our priority standards. She looked through all of our assessments in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade and gave us feedback on that. And really, that feedback was very positive and kind of showed that we were in the right direction with the standards that we chose and how we unpacked them and assessed them. She had some minor feedback in terms of how could we maybe condense some of our standards. But really, we were really excited to kind of see that all of that hard work really got some positive feedback, and we really are looking to continue with that work. We like that kind of freedom of continuously looking at our standards, looking at our data, and saying, "Okay, this is not testing well. What are we not understanding? What are we not picking up on? What are we not teaching appropriately?" And working together to kind of help each other through that. And so that's really exciting. It's a lot of work, but it's really exciting to kind of have that. In six through eight, we also have the change in our standards to move from words like fluently to flexibly and efficiently. So for example, in the sixth grade standards, it used to say that students needed to fluently know how to add, subtract, multiply, and divide decimals. And now it's more they need to flexibly and efficiently multiply, add, subtract, multiply, and divide decimals. And so students come in with all different strategies from elementary school, and we can, again, just work with those strategies and share those strategies with each other. And I kind of say to the kids, you know, as long as you can do it efficiently, and we talk about what that word means, it's okay however you do it, however you need to do it to make the most sense for you. So that was a shift that we had kind of already incorporated, but it's nice now that it's in writing to kind of support that for us. And then those bullet points on the right really just kind of talk about some of those, again, key shifts and math practices that we are really focusing on in grades six through eight. So making sense and persevering in challenging math problems. I think working on that perseverance is always a struggle with middle school kids. And being okay with sometimes we just didn't get an answer, or we didn't get a right answer, but we did a lot of problem-solving and talking and discussing throughout the way. And then estimation, again, Brenda talked about that real-world estimation. So starting to put that into real-world context. So if we're planning a party and we're planning for the food, do we want to estimate up for the? do we want to estimate up for the number of pizzas we need? Or do we want to estimate down? And having those conversations about what that math looks like for estimation. And again, always discussion. So talking about it in classes, having each other critique the work and looking at that in the classes and looking at different strategies. I often hear things like, I didn't think of it that way. Or that way is way easier than how I was doing it. And so having them look at those different connections in the strategies. So here are the courses that we offer at the middle school. So at each grade level, we have our universal classes. And then also in each grade level, there's a compacted or sometimes called accelerated class that does, students have to qualify through different criteria to kind of be in those classes and also have different criteria to stay in those classes. In eighth grade, that accelerated class is actually the Algebra I class. So they do all of the same lessons and assessments as the Algebra I class at the high school. And then students who complete that successfully receive an elective high school credit. Our tier-two interventions are implemented throughout our day. But we're really lucky to have a Flex Academy time at the end of our day every other day. So as a math teacher and also our ELA teachers, we do not have students scheduled during that time. Instead, we can flexibly group them based on our data, our formative data. So instead of waiting until a kid failed a test or is really struggling, I can use my formative data to flex them in for a day, two days, or it might be, reteach things. Our sixth-grade team works a lot on looking at our formative data and saying, okay, Caitlin Claussen, her kids really knocked this out of the park. Mine struggled a little bit more on this standard. Do you mind taking my kids and teaching that lesson to them? And seeing if that works? Maybe they need to hear it a different way, see a different strategy. And then we have those conversations in our PLC about what are those strategies that are really working? So that next time around, we can kind of shift and try new things. So we're really lucky to have that time. And then our tier-three interventions are also implemented during the day, during students' encore time. And we place kids in those tier-three interventions when we're seeing those same kids getting flexed in for those tier-two. When that universal instruction is just consistently not working, we just want to have our tier-three interventionists take a look and see, is there something else maybe getting in the way? And then she can run that program during that time during the day. And I won't read these all. But for each grade level, I also included what the standards say are our critical areas of understanding. So when we're having those PLC conversations or when we're having those six, eight conversations about what standards should be priority or what needs more time, we always kind of come back to these critical areas of understanding and say, okay, the standards say they need to know this. So this standard might need to get passed on a little bit. Plan on a time of who's going to teach it and when. But we go back to these critical areas in terms of what do we need to just spend our most time on?
All right. At the high school, these are the math team members that helped with the writing of the curriculum. Tim Ranis and Maria Ellis also are special education support teams that are involved in implementing the math curriculum. Go ahead. So some key considerations for us at the high school. So the shifts were similar at the high school level, except for the shifts in content itself wasn't as big. A lot of the content shifts at the high school level were based on telling us when we were supposed to get to certain things. So it now says first two years indicating that it's supposed to be done in algebra and geometry, which those kind of were clear, right? If it was a geometry concept or not. So it made it easier than to make the rest of high school standards flow to the right classes. And then so we had to shift around and put things into the right classes so that it was done in the first two years like it was asked to. But we started the process with, we went to River Falls and observed there, talked to some of them, some of their teachers and figured out some of the things that they do in their block system that work for them. They've been very successful on state tests and stuff like that recently. So we wanted to pick their brain and get some ideas from them. We got some good ideas on ways that they implement certain classes, certain spin-off classes that they have once they, when student gets past Algebra II, different options that they have instead of taking the typical path, which is through pre-calc calc and that option. We also had Dr. Koziak review our materials. Largely, the responses were positive. She assessed the tests, went through and looked how they matched up with the standards and how, according to our priority standards, how we hit them, right? And so the response was largely good. Through Algebra I and geometry and in Algebra II, there were a few gaps that we needed to fill in because, and we knew going in that that was going to be a little bit of the case because it was after COVID stuff and we had made some adjustments to our curriculum at that point. But as far as when we went through the writing process this time around, when we did the shifting around, it made a, we ended up in Algebra I getting in more probability in Algebra I, something that many of the students going through the Core Three classes weren't getting much of before. So that was something that got implemented more. And then in Algebra II, really made a focus to get to statistics more as well and to get further into polynomials and things like that. That because now we worked with our vertical alignment as well. And the first two years, things helped with that. It helped us recognize how far they were really getting in Algebra I and geometry, which then what we could expect them coming into with Algebra II, which then made it easier through pre-calculus and calculus. These are the courses offered at the high school. Basically, all students are required at some point to go through Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. There are some slight differences with that. Some people take Algebra I in eighth grade, which doesn't count towards a high school credit. Well, it counts towards an elective high school credit, but it doesn't count as a math high school credit. So they still need three math credits at that point. So they would be required to take something after Algebra II. And so our elective courses are there. There are a bunch of computer science classes in the, that were not written in the curriculum this time around. Like it was, that's a different cycle. So there, you won't see the curriculum for those, but they're part of our math program. So these are our units within each one are what we built up this time around with making sure we hit the standards. And then same thing for our electives and pre-calculus, which allowed us to go a little bit further and help prepare our students for college or for AP Calc if they decided to go that route. Math 225 is the new name for stats. We have a dual-credit option for that. So there might be a little less AP testing that happens, but more students that are taking it for credit straight up as they're going through. And then we use the same unit plan template. And then there's a sample here. It's the probability unit sample from, that we added into Algebra I and how we laid things out, what our priority standards were and what supported, what support, supporting standards we needed within the unit.
So any questions for our team?
I don't have any questions, but I love your approach and how you collaborate together to always reassess and relook at where things are at and where to adjust. And I mean, all of you. And I actually love that things are moving to the word flexible as well. So that's, that's really cool. So any questions from anybody? Nope. Thank you. Great presentation. All right, moving on to item 9.3. Director of Human Services Melissa Cates will now present proposed updates to the employee handbook language for consent on the June 10th agenda.
Good evening. I have a lot to go through tonight, but I kind of put it into a hairy little chart so I can just go through and just talk about what the changes will be for each of these languages. So with these language changes, these are being presented tonight, would come forward for consent at the next meeting. These have gone through with the policy committee as well. So we reviewed, taken feedback from that committee, incorporated those changes into the language before bringing it forward tonight. So the first piece of language, employee child at work. You may recall that this was an administrative rule previously. And with the changes over to Neola and moving some of those things where you decided to get rid of that rule and put that language into the handbook. So just a move from administrative rule into the employee handbook. We did have some feedback from the committee, policy committee, and incorporated that into the language as well tonight. Payroll date. So with this information or this section of the handbook, this does apply to all employees. So trying to condense that language and not make it so much for people to read through and try to understand and really align it with the payroll processes that we have and add some clarity to that language. So spent a lot of time with the payroll department and going through making those changes. Personal leave increments. The only change here is to allow hourly staff to use their personal leave in minutes versus quarter, half, three-quarter, or full-day increments. So a little more flexibility for the hourly staff in utilizing their personal days.
Unpaid leave of absence. Again, spent a lot of time with payroll on this process. This can be kind of complex when a staff member takes unpaid leave just based on benefits that they have and not being compensated for that leave day that they've taken. So really worked with payroll to align the language to what our process is and reducing kind of that complexity of that language. So we did condense it a little and break it out into different sections to make it a little easier for staff to find what they're looking for in that language. The last one under the part one for all staff is evaluations. So looking at the new board policies that recently came through related to evaluations and really just adjusting and aligning that language to reflect what we brought forward with policies and referring back to the staff members. So really that language, kind of making it a little more generic to lead people to the board policy. Part two, section one, representation. This one you'll see a couple different times listed as I go through in different parts. And with this language, we really just wanted to clarify what the definition of a representative is. So as we bring staff in and have meetings with them, what is a representative? Who can be, who can play that role for you so, or with you? Part two again is teachers. Sorry if I didn't say that. Work schedule. So just going through this language, we added some wording to better align with different things that our staff may do. So instead of parent, just calling parent-teacher conferences within their contract days, allowing those days to be used for other things that might be more applicable to some staff than parent-teacher conferences. So. Teacher absence and substitutes. This is just an update to define what our current system is that we use for teacher absences. We were, had some old language in there, which is what a lot of this you'll see is cleanup. Professional compensation. So this was quite a big change to this section. But all of this has to do with the compensation model change that the board recently approved going into July 1. So all of the changes that are made within that section directly reflect what was, what changes were made by the board and approved earlier this spring. Section, or part two A is nurses. Again, representation, same as what I talked about with teachers. Same for hourly as we move into part three for representation. The next item under hourly is the compensable time for travel and professional development. This one was really just taking a look at that language. Again, I worked with payroll a lot on this process, this language. Just improving the process that we have. So if staff are traveling for professional development, going to conferences, cleaning up that language. It was kind of confusing the way we had it written before. We just took what was handed to us with the employee handbook and just as we've gone through and understand where things might be confusing to people, just tried to clean that language up and make it a little more clear for staff. Emergency school closing and inclement weather. This one, we updated language to provide some greater flexibility for staff if we have inclement weather. So we left in there the emergency school closing and then added an inclement weather. That reflects more what we started doing this year. If staff are able to, allowing them to work from home if they have that ability when we have a no-school day. So if they're a year-round staff member and rather than making them drive into the office, if they can work from home, we like to provide that option. Meal period. This is only specific to a certain group of staff who work six hours a day. The current language requires a 30-minute lunch break for staff who work six hours year-round or, I'm sorry, in any position for six hours a day. And just providing flexibility to either have a 30-minute break or not take a 30-minute break. Sometimes it's beneficial for the position. Maybe we want them here a little bit longer, so we add in that lunch break. But providing the supervisor a little bit of flexibility to give that staff member a break or not that meal period. They do receive other breaks, so that would just be the unpaid lunch break. Employee absence and subs. Again, same thing, updating the language, just reflecting the current system that we use. The next one is expenses, updating policy numbers because we did change the policy number when, under the expenses policy and clarifying what reimbursement, what is eligible for reimbursement within the hourly group. License renewal reimbursement. We added some clarification on our CDL renewal process and what we reimburse for drivers who receive their CDL. So cleaned that language up. There was one item, the notice of termination of employment, updating that language to align with other language in the handbook. There was just one little piece missing about personal leave, which is found other places in the handbook, but it was missed in this one section. So just wanted to make sure that all matched. Part four is administrators and directors, updating some title references and removed some language for a program that does, is no longer applicable to our district. Last section is five, substitute teacher pay and nurse pay schedules. So increasing, a recommendation to increase our teacher and substitute nurse pay rates as well as increasing recommendations to increase our hourly substitute pay rates. So did some comparisons with other districts in the area. Worked with Julie and Dr. Mueller and we came up with something that we believe is a good increase for those groups of employees.
All right.
Lot of work wrapped up into a few minutes.
Thanks, thanks for running through that quickly. Is there any questions from the board?
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and or voted separately? How would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided? Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Khadija. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda by, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Chris.
As always at the end of the year, there's always a couple weeks where it's really busy. Had the honor and opportunity to attend a couple of really cool events this past week. We had the Project Search graduation at Gunderson. We had some home undergraduates that have completed that program. It was really cool to see that, how those, those students are moving on with their adult lives and their careers and getting jobs. That's, it was really fun to see. We had senior recognition night, a bunch, I think over $200,000 in scholarships were awarded to a bunch of students that night. So it was good to see all those students pursuing their education and military careers. And then of course, we had graduation on Saturday. Very good event, very well-attended. I mean, the bottom bowl, the whole lacrosse center was darn near full. So I don't remember of the years past, we had the backside of the auditorium down, but it was, it was a lot of people out there, great day. Lot of happy families, lot of happy students. And then obviously tonight, we had our. And then obviously, tonight, we had our retiree reception. Again, thanks to our 300 years of service to the district. So those people will be missed. That's all I got.
All right, thanks. Lindsay.
Yeah, I guess congrats to all the grads. And I'm sure you all have bright futures ahead of you. And I just want to acknowledge all the presentations tonight. I'm always, you know, blown away just stepping aside as just a parent and a member of the community. Just something as simple as math and all the work that goes into that behind the scenes and all the side projects and grants and all the extra work. It's just like that one thing, math. You know, I'm so appreciative that my kids get to go to, in this district, you know, have people that are so dedicated and put in all these extra hours for every little thing. And that's not just math, it's everything that you hear about in these meetings. So thank you for those who presented on that. And to the student council, just what awesome things that they're doing with that too and what great kids come and present at these meetings. It's just such a privilege to hear from everybody. So appreciate all that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Maggie.
I'll echo the congratulations to all of the graduates, the retirees. I know lots of student athletes have been mentioned as well with achievements. And then we'll also just share kudos. I feel like everyone I talked to in the last few weeks is really tired. Parents, staff, everyone, and is still, you know, going out of their way to make the end of the school year fun. So thank you for all your efforts with different end-of-year celebrations and activities.
All right, thank you. Bridgette.
Yeah, again, echo the congratulations to so many individuals this week. And also want to echo just the kudos, like Lindsay was saying, to the middle school student council members. It is very apparent that we have some future schooling, community leaders in the making. So that, I just love the fact that we have amazing advisors that really mentor these students. And it just, again, just contributes to such an amazing school district. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Barb.
I echo what Chris had said about graduation on Saturday. It was a privilege to be able to shake hands with over 300 graduates this year. And just impressed attending the scholarship event to see how many students were actually awarded in our district. And congratulations to our retirees.
Thank you. Keven.
I want to say congratulations to the graduates and to all the families that attended and also students that attended and that helped with the event. I also want to talk about, since I'm student rep, I should talk about maybe the students at our school. So recently, we've gotten our schedules for the next year. And I'm pretty sure you guys all know, since you guys all made the new schedule for next year, it's like, make it different. How it's like, it does feel different and it's definitely going to be different. But I'm personally a little excited to see how it goes, but also nervous. And I've seen a lot of other people nervous about it. How some people didn't get classes that they needed or classes that they wanted and how they have to redo their entire schedules because they've gone like, for example, five PE classes when they only need half a credit for graduation. And some people just feel unappreciated with their schedules. Well, some people got everything that they needed. And I don't know if that has to do with the schedule at all or how certain classes are done and how certain class periods, like PEs, can't be put in certain periods. And then also want to talk about how there were some students who were advocating for social issues at our school recently. And that's it.
All right, thanks for the feedback. Khadija.
Yeah, this was my first, I got to go to my first graduation as a board member. And it's the first one that I've been to since I walked across that stage. And so that was, I thoroughly enjoyed it. I thought it was so cool to see all those students and celebrate their big day with them. I thank you to the families for letting us be a part of that celebration. I mean, I know like the school puts it on, but I just felt like we got to be kind of like an intimate part of their whole family achievement. So I really appreciate that. I also wanted to highlight that Sand Lake got to celebrate 25 years, which is really cool because I was a Sand Lake kid. I think I started in 2001, so it was like maybe four years after it opened. So I have a lot of love for that building and those folks, so congratulations to them. I wasn't able to attend, but I got to see all the pictures and it looked really cool. Other than that, congrats to the grads. Hope you guys are getting to go to all the cool parties and eat all the fun graduation party food. And make sure to, just in general, drive safe because we got a lot of kiddos out on their bikes right now as the weather gets warmer. So just keep an eye out for them. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I want to, once again, thank the retirees for their incredible dedication to the school district of Holman over the years and wish them the best in their retirement. And I had a pretty busy week last week, so I wrote down a number of things. I did attend the senior recognition night last week. And I found it really impactful seeing the number of Holman seniors receiving scholarships for their outstanding academic and athletic achievements. So congratulations to all those students who received a scholarship award that evening. I also attended the Village of Holman's Joint Review Board Annual Meeting on May 23rd on behalf of the School District of Holman. The purpose of this meeting was to review matters related to active TIF districts within the Village of Holman. And Mr. Myers, Principal of Sand Lake, invited me to deliver the welcoming speech at the Sand Lake's 25th anniversary celebration last week. I spoke a little bit about what it was like back in 1999, my family's journey to Sand Lake, my experience there as a parent, and ended with some thoughts as a school board member. There was a ton of fun by everyone, from Who Wants to Play a Millionaire to, we had four mystery staff members that were, staff members that had been there the full 25 years. And then it was revealed what was in the time capsule from 25 years ago. And then the students also got to put in new items into the time capsule for, to be opened in the next 25 years. So thank you, Mr. Myers. I also served food at the Sand Lake All School Picnic last week. And despite the weather, many families still came out and they got to see the contents of the time capsule and enjoyed lunch with their children. And I just had a great time seeing the community members and connecting with many families while I was there. I also attended the Project Search graduation at Gunderson last week. And Project Search is a program that teaches the special needs students job skills in a hospital setting that can be transferable anywhere. And I find the students really, really amazing. There were eight graduates, four from Holman. And my favorite part of the evening was listening. Each of them get to give their own speech on, at their graduation, their own graduation speech. So congratulations to all those graduates. And lastly, I attended graduation at the Lacrosse Center on Saturday. This is, again, one of my favorite events of the year because us here as school board members, our primary focus in everything we do throughout the school year centered around student achievement. And graduation is a pinnacle of celebrating that success. So I greatly enjoyed seeing all the graduates, the diversity of individuals and personalities and handshakes. Everybody, the handshakes are, you never know what you're going to get. So, so congratulations to all the Holman graduates of 2024 and best wishes to their future endeavors. And then we can move on to the upcoming board meeting schedule. So our last day of school is June 6. And also on that day is the Holman Middle School Groundbreaking Ceremony at 8:00 AM. And then the Viking Elementary Groundbreaking Ceremony at 10:00 AM. And then on June 10, we have our next board meeting at 7:00 PM. And June 24 is the board meeting, the second board meeting of June at 7:00 PM. So is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Barb is moved. Krista, second, to adjourn the meeting at 7:59 PM. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.